Welcome again to the Willis Hour. This is Zach Goodlander. I'm here with Pat Riley, our Public Works Director.
Good morning, everybody.
Last night was our regular meeting. Like normal, we went through the roll call. All council members were present, as well as various members of the staff. We went through our invocation and pledge of allegiance. First thing on the agenda was a citizens inquiry. This was a time for Meals on Wheels to give an update on their transportation pilot program for the citizens of Willis. And this is a shuttle program that's going to take citizens from Willis, from the Krogers, from a couple of apartment complexes, into Conroe and into Conroe Shuttle Program. For the first month, this will be free, and thereafter will be two dollars each way.
And they're doing it once a week, right?
Once a week.
Starting off.
That's correct.
It's going to be a good program for Willis. If you need to get to Conroe and to the hospital, that's one of the points they're going to be at dropping off. I believe also the drop-off point's going to be the Lowes, between the Lowes and the Sams. Is that correct, Zach?
That's correct. This is going to be really beneficial to the elderly and those that don't have otherwise transportation to socialize and really get around and do their errands. So this is going to be a great program.
Good program.
Next was the consent agenda. This was basically minutes from the previous meeting, approval of accounts payable and the financial statements. And this was, of course, approved unanimously. Next, we went to a first reading on a new ordinance to regulate handicap parking on private property. Do you want to touch on that one, Pat?
This ordinance is to... It's not forcing people to put up handicap parking spaces. It's allowing the police to enforce the handicap on private property. We've had complaints about people parking in handicap places on private property, and this gives the authority to the police to give out tickets if people are in handicap parking, but they don't have the appropriate stickers and things of that nature.
Yeah, this gives the police, if there's this handicap sign, to be able to write a ticket. And I think according to state law, the minimum fee for that is $500.
I believe that's correct.
Next, we moved on to new business. First, item A was consider of approval for a street closure request of Holland and Kennedy Streets for the upcoming Juneteenth celebration on June 18th. This was, of course, approved unanimously. This is going to be the second annual Juneteenth celebration in Willis. It will be at MLK Park on Saturday, June 18th.
And they're planning on having the same stuff as they had last year. I believe it was a little train in the streets and other activities. And it sounded like it's going to be a bigger event than it was last year.
Yeah, it just continues to grow. Next was another street closure request, this time at the northern end of Golden Street to Perkins Street for Charles and Fay Love Ladies Hawaiian Lual event on May 28th.
Wow, Hawaiian Lual. In Willis, alright.
That's right.
I wonder if they're going to have the pig in the ground.
Yeah, I think they're going to invite everyone around town, maybe. And then that was approved unanimously as well. Next on the agenda was approving fireworks variants for Gator Motoplex, as well as the American Legion for their own Independence Day celebrations.
Gator Motoplex is having their celebration again this year, I believe fireworks. And they're inside the city limits, so that's why they were asking for the variants.
Yeah, and I think both the American Legion and the Gator Motoplex are going to be doing their Independence Day celebrations the weekend after 4th of July, maybe.
Yes.
If I have that correct. And that was approved as well. Next, the mayor proclaimed in Willis Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. We had a strong contingent of about six motorcycle groups, probably about 30, 40 individuals in all, to accept that proclamation.
Yeah, you need to be watching for motorcycles. They can get in your blind spot really quick, and they're just trying to get to their destination, just like you are. So watch out for them and be safe.
That's right. Yeah, like the mayor said, cars watch out for motorcycles, motorcycles watch out for cars.
That's right.
That was approved. Next was consider an approved removal or addition of signatures on all financial and bank statements.
Yeah, that was necessary because of Brenda Burns, our secretary. She has retired. And they had to take her name off the financial signatures and put Marissa on there as our new signature authorization for all the accounts and financial statements.
That's right. And that was approved as well. Next was reports. This is a time for each council member to suggest any ideas for future council meetings and any thanks. Most council members thanked Pat, your Public Works Department, and all their hard work after the recent storms.
Yeah, the guys, they did a great job. Our streets department, they came in early that morning. It was on the 27th. I came in early as well. When I came in, I saw the whole town dark, no electricity. I knew it was going to be a bad day. So our guys performed very well. They were able to start clearing trees out of roadways. And we pretty much had all the roadways done, or passable, that is, after lunch. And then, of course, we spent the last two weeks of cleaning up. And then the contractor came in and actually chipped everything. And our guys did a great job. They stepped up to the plate. It was hard work, but they got it done. And we commend them for that.
Yeah, I've heard that same sentiment expressed throughout town recently on how hard they worked and how quickly that got picked up.
They did. And it's also National Public Works Week this week, so it sort of plays right into that thing. If you don't know what Public Works is, that's basically what we're talking about on this segment, is they take care of the streets for you, allow you to drive down the street, get to work. They are the people who allow you to take a shower in the morning time, because to keep the water going. And then when you're done with that water, they're the people who also treat it and make sure it goes back into the environment clean. So if you see someone that works in that capacity, thank them for it and thank for what they do. They do a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that a lot of people don't know about.
Definitely, definitely. Moving on from that, we went to our engineers report. Mike Mathina, and he updated us on a lot of the road projects. Miners Construction's going to be doing work and starting work on, what is it, five or six road projects?
Six road projects. We have a lot of projects, street projects going on right now. We still have some utility projects going on. The utilities going out east of town. Water line's being installed on 1097 East. That's still in the works or still being completed. And hopefully that will be completed pretty soon. Putting in a new lift station on the east side of town on 1097. The one that Zach is talking about, Miners Construction, they are going to be starting on Young Street. They've already started putting up signs and staking things. And they're going to be starting on Young Street in Calhoun to completely redo the south part of it, not the north part of Young Street, because we've already done that one. Calhoun is not paved right now, so they're going to pave it. Then they're going to jump over to Rogers and Paddock more than likely. Oh, I'm sorry, no. They're going to jump to South Campbell next, try to get it done during the summertime while school's out, because there's a lot of school buses that go down that street. Then they'll get on Rogers and Paddock and tackle those. And not to forget, since it's been sort of delayed a little bit by utilities, TechStop still is planning on doing 1097 through town. And you can pretty much bet it's all going to start about the same time. So just be careful, be patient. It's going to be good when it's done. Just watch out for workers and just be careful when you're driving.
Yeah, there may be quite a bit of detour going on as far as going to Long Street or down to 830 to avoid that construction there on 1097.
That's correct. We also have contractors, as y'all probably have seen. That's one of the more noticeable projects is the West Side Loop or West Side Feeder, because we don't have a name for it yet. And that's in progress. All the utilities are in. And the street contractor is fixing to start with the actual base probably this week or next week, depending on the rain. We keep getting a lot of rain. And hopefully that one may be done July, August timeframe.
Yeah, it should go pretty quick. And if anyone does have a name suggestion for that new, what we're calling the West Side Connector for now, just let us know over at City Hall, and we'll put it forward.
We'll put it to council.
After that was the city manager's report. And this was a time where we really wanted to express thanks to our retiring city secretary, Brenda Burns, who's been with us for 35 years. We gave her some really great gifts, which is a testament to her really great work over the past 35 years. Gave her the key to the city.
Yeah, that was really great. That was good for her.
As well as a flag that was presented by Will Metcalf that had flown over the Capitol. And then we got her achievements struck into the U.S. Congressional Record by Kevin Brady.
That's pretty cool.
Very, very good testament to her dedication over the years. We'll miss her.
Of course, Public Works had to put in. So we gave her a, not a regular manhole lid, but it was a pretty cool manhole lid made into a table that had her name on it and the time that she had served for the city, that she can use as a little end table or something of that nature, which was really cool.
Yes, it was. After that, council broke into executive session, and that pretty much concluded the meeting, unless you've got anything else, Pat?
Well, also, we covered the cooling towers. We have it approved for the cooling towers, the funding. And they're in design phase right now. They're probably about 60% in design, which means that this should help with the water, H2S in the water, the smell a little bit. It should eliminate that once those cooling towers end. So we're actually waiting to see those be installed so that the water complaints can hopefully go away.
Yeah. And also in the interim, if I'm not mistaken, aren't we allowed to do a higher percentage of a mix now?
We are. Our contract, we're supposed to be at a 70/30, I believe. And we are at about a 50, 70% Catahoula, 30% Jasper. But we are at about a 57% Jasper. And I mean, Jasper and then Catahoula's rest, because of, you know, during the summertime, that tends to be the time that the smell increases.
It comes out of the ground much, much warmer as well.
Yes. And we're going to be allowed to do that blending more until we get the cooling towers in. Then we'll get back onto our contract with SJRA.
Alright. And then council broke into executive session, and that concluded the meeting.
In executive session, they did approve Marissa Quintuela as the new city secretary. Hector texted me that this morning.
Alright, so that's official. We have a new city secretary.
That's correct.
After 22 years, Brenda Burns is no longer the city secretary. And Marissa Quintanilla will assume the mantle from here forward.
That's correct.
That concludes our meeting. Once again, this was Zach Goodlander and Pat Riley, Director of Public Works with the City of Willis. And that concludes our Willis Hour. See you again next month.
Have a great day.
Tune in on June 7th at 1:00 PM for Veterans Air, the Veterans Hour here on your Lone Star Community Radio. Veterans Air, news, talk, and commentary for veterans, their dependents, and our military members. This month, we'll highlight the Military Veterans Peer Network with Ashley Taylor, who will tell us everything we need to know to be a veteran in Montgomery County, and introducing our new co-host, Dangerous Dan, the Muffin Man. Veterans Air, think of us as a land ad course without a compass.
Welcome back here to the Willis Hour on Lone Star Internet Radio. It's so good to be with you here today. My name is Lauren Swonky, and I'm with 1097 Willis Monthly News. And we are the hometown newspaper for Willis. And so it's just always a treat to be able to join you here on Lone Star Radio. And I'm excited to learn that Lone Star is soon going to be going FM. In addition to the internet availability, we're going to be able to pick it up on FM throughout the community and throughout Montgomery County. And so that is super exciting. That's going to be happening this summer. And here we are, almost into summer. It's so hard to believe. But I'm so excited about that and seeing Lone Star jump over to FM and being able to pick it up in my car out and about. It's going to be fun to be able to listen in to local radio, things that are going on, and people we know, and catching up on all the news. So that's a great thing happening here at Lone Star. Glad to join you today. Again, I'm Lauren Swonky, and I'm with 1097 Willis Monthly News. We're the community newspaper for Willis, Texas. And it's just, there's a lot of things going on in Montgomery County. And for a county the size of ours, I would say, man, we've just got a lot of change happening, a lot of new things going on. And, you know, it's election season. This year, we've got some important decisions to make at the polls. And right now, we actually, voting has started for the May runoff. And so those votes are so very important. I encourage you to go out and get your vote in and make sure that your voice is heard. Now, that voting is happening right now. And we are the newspaper for Willis. So for our listeners today, if you want to get in on early voting, you can definitely do that. And the location that you're going to want to head over to is the North Montgomery County Community Center. And it's right there off of I-45, if you're familiar with Lincoln Ridge, that road, Lincoln Ridge. That's going to take you to the North Montgomery County Community Center. And I just encourage you guys to get out and make sure that you get your opinions in on this vote, because it's very important. Now, for Precinct 1, which is where Willis Falls, there is a very important election happening. It's for our constable. And this is to determine who will run in the fall election against the Democratic candidate for constable. And so the candidates that are going for that position are Philip Cash and Ike Flewellen. That particular spot, we had several candidates to choose from in March. And here we are in May with those two candidates remaining. And that is, again, Ike Flewellen and Philip Cash. Both great guys, and I believe bring a lot to the table in the area of law enforcement. And so I think for our listeners today, that's an important one for us to make sure that we're out voting and deciding who's going to be running against the Democratic candidate this fall. Also, some of those that you'll see on the ballot, if you go out and vote, are for Railroad Commissioner, which is Gary Gates and Wayne Christian. For the Judge Court of Appeals, place two, you've got Mary Lou Keel and Ray Whelis. Now, that name, I'm not sure. You know, you read these names, and there are so many pronunciations. But again, that's for the Judge Court of Appeals, place two. For the Judge Court of Criminal Appeals, place five, is Brent Webster and Scott Walker. District Judge Ninth, Judicial District, Kate Shipman Bim and Phil Grant. Now, that one, I tell you what, that is a highly contested spot. And I've seen a lot on social media, a lot of signs out in the community. So that's one I encourage you to be sure to read up on. I know Kate Bim has been here on the station and possibly Phil Grant, too. But I just, I tell you, it's important that we get those judges in that are going to be just in their judgment. And so be sure to go out and vote on that one. The District Judge for Tenth, Judicial District, seat for Kristen Bays and Jennifer James Robin. Those are the two candidates there. Again, as I said before, the Constable Precinct One seat, which is between Philip Cash and Ike Flewellen for that fall election. And then candidates that are on the Democratic ballot for Railroad Commissioner are Cody Garrett and Grady Yarborough. So those are some of our important things to vote on. Voting has begun early. Voting will run through the 20th, so that's just through Friday. And you can jump over to the North Montgomery County Community Center from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM and make your voice heard. It's so important. We're looking at the fall coming up right here around the corner. And I know if you're listening to the Cindy Cochran Show, I'm telling you, she's sharing all the important information with you about this presidential election. And I'm sure it has lots of opinion interwoven through that program, but she can find out more, I'm sure. You can find out more, I'm sure, from Cindy on the morning, or I'm sorry, on the Cindy Cochran Show. Gosh, there's so much information out there. You've got to kind of boil it down to what is important and those values that you hold true, and find out and determine which candidate most represents you in those elections that are coming up this fall. So very, very, very important. Again, thanks for listening here to Lone Star Radio on the Willis Hour. It's always exciting to be with you. Now, there's lots of important things going on in the Willis community. And one of those things that I want to share with you about, it's in the May issue of 1097. And that is the West Side Connector Loop. Now, I'm sure that you've heard, if you're a regular listener to the Willis Hour, I'm sure that you've heard my friends with the City of Willis talk about that a little bit. But I want to be sure to share it with you, because I think it's very important for those of us that live in North Montgomery County, and for those of us specifically that live in Willis, this road is super important. And so basically, they're working on it right now. They've cleared out the land. And it's going to go from 1097 West at Canyon Falls Boulevard. So if you're familiar with that shopping strip at Canyon Falls Boulevard, it's Canyon Ridge, I believe, is the name of that subdivision. It's right off 1097 West. And in that shopping center, you've got Snap Fitness, you've got Pizza Hut. And so it's that street, and they've cleared land on the south side of 1097 West, between 1097 and Old Montgomery Road. And so that's going to open up a lot for our traffic situation there. Man, I tell you what, if you get out on 1097 around 5:30, 6 o'clock, it's kind of challenging, especially for those of you I know that live out 1097 towards the lake. I feel for you guys in the afternoons trying to get home. And so I think this is a great relief. You know, it's not going to do a whole lot for y'all that are headed home in the evenings. But for individuals that are just wanting to get to 45 and want to bypass that intersection at 45 and 1097, this is going to be a great addition. And it's going to have a light there at Canyon Falls, and then a stop sign, a three-way stop sign on the Old Montgomery Road side. And the goal of this is to relieve traffic there on 1097, give individuals an opportunity to get to Old Montgomery Road, and then ultimately to the I-45 feeder, I should say, the southbound feeder. And so hopefully, that's going to really open traffic up a lot. And just a heads up, there are plans, TechStop plans, to transition that feeder to solely southbound. And so that's going to be a big change for Willis residents. And I'm sure there will be a little bit of confusion for a little bit. If you're familiar with that little area, goodness gracious, people heading from Chick-fil-A and McDonald's and from Old Montgomery Road in general and trying to get up to the light there at 109745. I tell you, turning that around is going to be something else. But just a heads up on that, it is going to happen. So be looking for that as that transition happens. Whenever the new loop opens up, the West Side Connector Loop, it's going to make a difference. It's going to, I think, help out in the Willis community with traffic. Now, something interesting, the City of Willis is working on naming that West Side Connector Loop. And that was a piece of business that was brought up last night, or I should say, two nights ago, at our city council meeting by Hector Forrest, our city manager. And he just said, hey, guys, we need to be working on naming this West Side Connector Loop. So I'm excited to see what they're going to name it. Maybe they'll name it after you. I don't know. But be sure to keep an ear to the ground. We'll see what happens with that. Now, stay tuned here on Lone Star Radio. We'll be back here in just a few minutes on the Willis Hour to share more with you about what's going on in the Willis community.
Tune into Chamber Chat with your host, Courtney Gally and Samantha Good with the Conroe, Lake Conroe Chamber of Commerce, every first Tuesday of the month at 11:00 AM. I am one of your hosts, Courtney Gally. Samantha and I will chat about the Conroe Chambers upcoming events and programs for the month. Relax with a cup of joe or your favorite drink for Chamber Chat.
Welcome back here to the Willis Hour on Lone Star Radio. So glad to be with you today. I'm Lauren Swonky, and I'm with 1097 Willis Monthly News. I don't know about you, but I get weary whenever I'm watching, and I just reminded myself of this, but whenever you're watching a show, and like they, especially nowadays, whenever you're watching it on Netflix, and they kind of show like a little, the very end of the previous segment at the beginning of the next segment. And it's kind of like, I already know that. I just saw it just get to the rest of the segment. We watch Fixer Upper a lot in our house. And so it's like, okay, I know, Chip jumped in the lake. I don't know if you guys watch Fixer Upper, but he's always, you know, up to something crazy. And it's like, okay, I already saw that. Just carry on with the program. So I hate to recap and tell you who I am every time, but we might have new listeners joining us. So I'm so glad you guys are listening in. I'm Lauren. I'm with 1097, and we're the Willis Newspaper. And so we're here today to share with you, or I'm here today, to share with you a little bit about what's going on in the Willis community. Now, a few minutes ago, I was sharing with you guys about the West Side Connector Loop. And it's just, it's going to be, I think, a great relief in the area of traffic in the Willis community. So so far today, we've talked about the importance of getting out your vote. And that's happening just today through tomorrow as far as early voting. It's very important that you get that done. And then next Tuesday, you can, of course, vote on May 24th. That is the actual, you know, voting day. But if you want to get in your early vote, which makes it a little bit easier, I encourage you to do that. Do you guys remember earlier this spring how the polls were just swamped? And so, you know, you just never know. People are really turning out in droves for this vote this year. And so I encourage you to be sure to get out there and get your vote taken care of. But I did, I talked to you about the importance of the vote and what's going on in the election, and then also sharing with you about the West Side Connector Loop. It's a new roadway, and it's between 1097 West and Old Montgomery Road. And while I'm talking about Old Montgomery Road, this month, we have a section in 1097, and it's kind of an antiquing and resale guide. And the reason why I connected that with Old Montgomery Road is because Old Montgomery Barn is a resale shop there right on Old Montgomery Road. And so if you've been down that road, maybe, you know, you're new to the area and you're not familiar with it. But I encourage you to take a little drive down Old Montgomery Road and check it out, because there's a really neat business, which is Old Montgomery Barn. It's a resale shop. They've got all kinds of cool stuff. And in this month's issue of the paper, which we're still in May, but I'm telling you, June is just sneaking up on us. So be sure to pick up your May issue of the paper before it's off the shelves. But I tell you, there's, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, there's seven antique and resale shops that are listed in this month's issue that tell a little bit about the antique and resale options in the community. And, you know, antiquing and resale is kind of one of those popular things. I think it's always been, people have always been a little bit interested in getting something for a good deal. But I think these days, like with, you know, kind of anything goes in fashion and home interior decorating and all of that, you know, it's even more popular. And so you might check out this month's issue to pick up that antiquing and resale shop guide, because we've got six different shops listed. And it gives a little bit of background on each one. This was a lot of fun to put together last month. I was able to personally go out and meet each of these owners and visit with them. Some we have a relationship with. I think about Jenny over at Jenny's Furniture and Jeans in Willis. She is just a mainstay of the Willis community. And if you've been there for any length of time, you know about Jenny's there in Willis. And so, you know, there are just a lot of great businesses in the community. And one of the things we try to do at 1097 is to encourage our readers to shop locally, to patronize these Willis businesses. And maybe you're listening today, and you are not from Willis. Maybe you are from the Woodlands, or maybe you're from out in Montgomery. So you don't really have a whole lot of interest in Willis businesses. But wherever you are, I encourage you to shop locally, because here's the deal. You're supporting local families, doing their business. And that's a really important thing. You're taking care of your neighbors by simply putting your dollars into your community. And so whether you're in Conroe, Montgomery, the Woodlands, wherever you find yourself, shop locally. Support those folks that are around you working hard to take care of their families. And so this month, be sure to read about the antiquing and resale shopping in Willis. It's a lot of fun. Now, I was telling you about the West Side Connector Loop. That's going to be an exciting addition. One of the things that I think is on everybody's mind in the Willis community and all over Montgomery County, and for that matter, all over the greater Houston area, is some of this crazy weather that we've been having and the effects of that weather. Recently, you know, we had this huge storm come through the community, and particularly, it was in Willis. You know, it wasn't long ago. I believe it was just back in December, maybe December, January, that we had a tornado in Willis that was, I want to say, it was like the north part of Willis on Highway 75. We saw a lot of damage to Mueller, the metal company there on 75, and some of the area, or some of the homes and the businesses in that area were definitely affected. Well, here again, just this last month, we had a major windstorm. It was a major storm, had heavy winds. I don't know, it hasn't been indicated yet that it was a true tornado, but I've heard that there was a tornado that came through. And there were so many trees down all over the Willis community. You know, you always see people on television standing around after a terrible storm with a tree on their house, and it's pitiful, and you do feel bad for them. But until it happens to you, you really don't have the compassion or interest, you know, that you would when you experience it firsthand. And I tell you, guys, I experienced it firsthand. We had a tree come down on our home. We had one down in our backyard. Just major situation at our own home. And so I tell you what, I have a whole lot more compassion for people on the news that are going through these traumatic weather situations. And so there's a lot of cleanup going on in the Willis community. And I just want to And so there's a lot of cleanup going on in the Willis community, and I just wanna commend the City of Willis and the employees of the City of Willis, including the Police Department, for their hard work after that storm, um, at the end of April. You know, wow, it was just amazing, the trees that were down that next day. The power was out, um, for about a day and a half, I believe, in, in some parts of the community. Schools were closed for two days. I know Willis Independent School District closed for two days, um, because of power being out. And it was a, it was a, a major event in Willis. And so I just say, way to go to the City of Willis and to this, the Police Department and all of those that were a part of the cleanup efforts. Kudos to them, because they just have done an amazing job. Um, if you drove around by the City of Willis, um, you would have seen between the city and the railroad tracks, they had a massive pile of debris from all over the city. They opened up this space and said, hey, if you have trees down, if you have underbrushed down, bring it and pile it up. And they took care of it. They, they went and they rented this massive grinder, and I wanna say, I can't remember what they, what the, the dollar amount on that. Maybe like eight hundred dollars an hour. I have it in my notes from the last city council meeting. But to rent this massive grinder to grind up all of the trees from all over the community, it was a lot, um, for the City of Willis to do that. And now they're gonna be able to request some funds from FEMA to, to, uh, you know, take care of those efforts. But, man, way to go for handling that situation very, very well. Uh, more to come here on the Willis Hour. I'll be sharing with you a little more about things going on in the community and about the farmer's market in Willis, which is tomorrow. You don't wanna miss it.
Lone Star Community Radio is FM. That's right. Set your radio dials and your button presets to Conroe's FM one oh four point five and one oh six point one, coming in June of two thousand and sixteen. To celebrate this edition and the addition of video versions of our talk and music shows on YouTube, cable TV, and our city TV, we are offering special sponsorships rates, which include free audio spots that are played throughout our broadcast. Interested? Check out our sponsor rates for shows just like the one you're listening to online at irlonestar.com/sponsor, or call the station at nine three six six four seven five seven four seven. Reaching the people of Montgomery County with Montgomery County's community radio station with Lone Star Community Radio.
On Lone Star Radio, so glad to be with you here on the Willis Hour. Lots of good things going on in Montgomery County and, uh, some fun things going on in Willis in particular. Now, I know that there are farmer's markets around Montgomery County that many of our listeners, you, maybe you, um, have taken part in, and I, I just say, hey, way to go. That's a really neat thing to participate in and to support our local farmers and artisans. I just love it, and so I just wanted to give you guys a heads up. Today is May nineteenth, so tomorrow, I encourage you to go by the, um, the farmer's market in Willis. And some of you guys may have no idea that there even is a farmer's market. Well, it's the first and third Friday of the month, and it's right next door to Montgomery County Milling. And so, um, if you're going down ten ninety-seven east, if you turn off of forty-five and you go down ten ninety-seven east, then you're just going to basically dead end into Montgomery County Milling. It's right before the railroad tracks. It's actually on, you know, right next to the railroad tracks, and, um, it's in the parking lot next door to the, the feed store. And basically, it is a little bit of everything. They've got honey, they've got produce, um, you know, handmade goods, baked goods, just all kinds of good stuff, right there in the center of Willis, in the heart of the community. And it's a great chance for you to get out there and to support local farmers and artisans, and it's one of those things that I just think is really cool in the Willis community, and I really appreciate, um, Montgomery County Milling and the board for, um, the Montgomery County Market Days is actually what it's, you know, it's title, but I refer to it as the Willis Farmer's Market. Um, but I, you know, big thanks to those guys for getting on this project and, and making it happen for the Willis community and for it to continue. We've gotta support it, right? And so I encourage you guys to go out and support this. It's very important, and I think it's gonna be a, a great thing for many years in the Willis community, if the community will support it, and, and, uh, just go and check it out. Again, that is at the, uh, the Montgomery County Market Days. It's the Willis Farmer's Market. It's next door to Montgomery County Milling, which is right at the end of ten ninety-seven east, and it's a great event. You don't wanna miss it. Um, a few other things that I wanted to be sure to share, there is a Juneteenth event that is coming up, and it is June eighteenth. It's Saturday, June eighteenth, um, celebrating Juneteenth, which is a recognition of the proclamation that came to Galveston that, that, uh, just told all of those slaves in Texas that they were free. Um, it came a while after the, the war ended, and so those folks, I tell you what, that was a, a great day in Texas. And so Juneteenth is the celebration of that day, and Willis has started this Juneteenth celebration. It began last year, uh, was the first one, and it's a, it's a great event. It's coming up on June eighteenth. All are invited to attend. It's sponsored by the City of Willis. Some of the things you might expect, they've got lots of kids' activities. I went out last year and we covered it for the paper, and I tell you, it was a lot of fun. You've got water slides, and you've got, um, the, the big bouncy houses and a, a three-on-three tournament that's going on. They had speakers to talk about, uh, the beauty of freedom, and it just was a really neat, family-oriented event. And so I encourage you guys to, uh, to go out and, and be a part of that event. It's on June eighteenth. Now, lots of things going on in the Willis community, and I can share a little bit about those things, but I encourage you to pick up your own copy of ten ninety-seven, uh, we're the Willis Community Newspaper. And you might say, ten ninety-seven, isn't that the name of the roadway in Willis? And it is indeed. And that's the reason why we named the paper ten ninety-seven four years ago. This is our four-month anniversary issue. And, um, the reason that we picked ten ninety-seven as the name is because really, most life in Willis happens around ten ninety-seven. You're gonna be traveling that roadway, um, going somewhere, and so lots of living going on around that roadway, and so we felt like, um, our, the newspaper could really be kind of a hub for that life. And so I encourage you, be sure to pick up your issue of ten ninety-seven. Also, you know, it's, it's full of important information, but it's also full of coupons in the ads. And I don't know about you, but I love to use a coupon, so I, I, I think it's a great reason to pick up the paper all in itself, even if you did not want to be informed, although I can't imagine anyone not wanting to be informed. It's important to know what's going on in your community. So pick up your copy. Also, you can visit us online at ten ninety-seven dot net. That's all spelled out in letter form. Um, now then, some things going on with the school with Willis I S D. Exciting stuff happening. Um, you know, this month at the, at the school board meeting, many of the sports teams were recognized, um, by the school board and celebrated, and that's one of my favorite things at the end of the year. Whenever we start coming close to summer, the school board recognizes each sports team. So you've got the girls volleyball team coming in, you've got the, the basketball team, you've got the soccer teams. And I just am always very impressed with the, uh, the coaching staff at Willis High School and with those students that, that participate in, um, in sports. And I wanna be sure to recognize the Willis High School baseball team and also the Willis High School softball team. What an awesome season those teams had, and both made a run into the playoffs, and both teams were number one in district. So we have a district champion, uh, softball team and baseball team this spring. Can't get much better than that. That's awesome. So way to go to those students that have worked really hard to make that happen, and those coaches. We have a brand-new coaching staff, um, on the baseball team, and wow, they have really done a great job at bringing that team along this spring and, and even to be in the district champs. That's an awesome, awesome, uh, achievement this spring. So congratulations to all of them and those big achievements. And then also, as far as the M V P, uh, the Most Valuable Player, every month, the, uh, the school district names a Most Valuable Player for, among the staff, the faculty and staff, and this month, Cassandra Matlock was named the Most Valuable Player. She is the theater teacher, uh, the theater director at Willis High School. I've met Ms. Matlock. She is full of energy. She's full of fun. She's very creative. And I, whenever she was named, I thought, wow, you couldn't have picked a better, uh, person for that spot. And so way to go to Cassandra Matlock. What a, a great, uh, teacher, a great example, a great inspiration for our students in the Willis community, and again, that's the Most Valuable Player at Willis I S D. Now, another school in the Willis community is Vista Academy. Vista Academy is undergoing a name change to Willis Classical Academy. Little bit of news about Vista, uh, changing over to Willis Classical Academy. And so as you, you guys maybe see, have seen that, um, in different places listed out, and people are going, what, what's Willis Classical Academy? Well, it's formerly known as Vista Academy. They've made this name change to, uh, to really support the, uh, really better, uh, better recognize, I should say, or better explain the type of curriculum and type of program they have there at, uh, at the school. And so again, Vista Academy shifting over to Willis Classical Academy. Who knew? But now you know, that's who it is. It's, it's Vista, now Willis Classical Academy, and you'll see more of that going into the new school year, from what I understand, more of that name and that transition. Uh, thanks so much for listening here to the Willis Hour on Lone Star Radio. It's always a pleasure to be with you here. Again, you know, I, I say this every month, but there's always something exciting going on in the Willis community, something for us to share with you and for you to get behind and to be a part of, no matter where you're listening from. Thanks for listening in today. It's always a joy to be with you, and we'll be back with you here next month on Lone Star Radio.
Thanks for checking out this production of Lone Star Community Radio, Montgomery County's community radio station. For more information on this show and other shows on Lone Star Community Radio, check us out online at irlonestar.com. If you're interested in sponsoring a program on Lone Star Community Radio and reaching the local audience of Montgomery County on FM, internet, TV, media, please call nine three six six four seven five seven four seven, or contact us online at irlonestar.com. This recording is a Lone Star Community Radio production, produced by the show host and Dick Schichler of Lone Star Community Radio. Interested in volunteering as a music DJ or starting your own talk show? Contact Dick Schichler at D I C K at irlonestar.com, or by phone at nine three six six four seven five seven four seven.